Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Rob Cattinello is excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for the executive minutes of February 10, 2014?
I'll move them.
I'll second them.
They've already been discussed, roll call a vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
A motion for the regular minutes of February 10, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We just did the regular minutes of February 24th, page three of nine.
We're on February 10th.
February 10th. Oh, we don't have February 10th. I have February 24th. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, February 10th, I've got it, page three of nine. I just remarked it the wrong way. Under Public Safety, second line down, I think it's just, Project Community Pride will hold their annual fundraiser on May 1st, 2014. I didn't identify it as a breakfast. I'm sorry.
Anything else? Right, roll call a vote as corrected.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Right, a motion for the executive minutes of February 24, 2014.
So moved.
Second. They've already been discussed, roll call a vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And a motion for the regular minutes of February 24, 2014.
So moved.
Second. Page five of seven, under 2014 Municipal Operating Budget Adjustments. I'll give you one, two, three, four, five. About the 12th line down, insurance is too high as employees contribute, not contribution. An E on the end rather than an I-O-N.
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Right, roll call a vote as corrected.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
All right. Welcome, everyone, I apologize, we ran over a little late today in our previous session. We've been pretty good lately, right, Sam? Once in a while? All right, thank you. Just a few announcements, and then I'll come down for a couple of proclamations. Announcement from the Shea Tree Management Board that free tree seedlings will be available to Madison residents on April 9th as part of the New Jersey Tree Recovery Campaign. This program helps communities replace trees damaged or destroyed by Superstorm Sandy. So from 12 to 2, and from 5 to 6 on the 9th, residents will be able to pick up their seedlings at Drew University's Simon Forum and Athletic Center. And there'll be a variety of tree types, but the exact mix will not be known until day of distribution. And they're all available on first come, first served. And there'll be guides there to help residents choose the right place on the property, where to plant a tree, and how to take care of it, so it can grab hold and replace all the trees we've lost over the last couple of winters, or not even winters, last couple of falls. The goal of the Tree Recovery Campaign is to distribute over 500,000 tree seedlings to residents of New Jersey over the next five years. And so if you have any questions, you can call Tina Notice, who is Drew Sustainability Coordinator, at 973-408-3660, or Gene Krikovia of our Shea Tree Management Board, at 973-301-9139. And I'm not too sure who each of you picked for the final four in NCAA's. I know my bracket is shot already, but if you had picked Florence Park Campus, Madison Florence Park Campus of Fairleigh Dickinson, to win the NCAA Division III Women's National Championship, you would have won. So congratulations to our own Fairleigh Dickinson University for NCAA Championship. And we were able to, myself and a few council members, to go down to DPW last Monday and thank them for all the work they did in snow removal. We distributed, we survived the blizzard of 2014 t-shirts, so you'll be seeing those t-shirts in their DPW yellow color. I did give permission, because I didn't think it would snow again, that if it did snow again, and I jinxed it, that they can let me know. So if you see a couple people yelling at the mayor, it's because it snowed tomorrow night, and I jinxed it. You will also see tonight that a resolution awarding a contract to Sefeli and Sons for Academy, Vinton, Wilson, Belmont, Pine Tree, Durwood, and Part of Niles, and North Street. So that's all the reconstruction projects, and that contract was awarded for 1.25 million. There'll be other related expenditures to that, but we're very happy. We have a long time working relationship with Sefeli, and look forward to them as they reconstruct those roads. And there's also another resolution in there, mentioning our former mayor, Woody Kirkus Lager, who is donating another portable radar speed sign. We had one recently donated by Realogy, and Woody saw that in the paper, decided he's going to also help remind people to drive safely in our neighborhoods. So we thank Mayor Kirkus Lager. And let me come on down and do a couple of proclamations. Thank you for joining us today and asking us to recognize, declare April as Autism Awareness Month. And we've seen some blue lights downtown, right? All right. Whereas autism is pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social, communication, and behavioral skills of those affected by it, and whereas more health professionals have become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as one in 88 children nationally, and one in 49 children in New Jersey. And whereas, while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive treatment early in their lives, it is often possible for these individuals to lead significantly improved lives. And whereas individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety, and to support families' resilience as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism presents. And whereas last year, $175,000 was raised by the Greater Morris Area Autism Speaks Walk, which will take place this year on Saturday, October 25th, at Central Park in Morris Plains. Whereas, to promote autism awareness in the borough of Madison, the Light It Up Blue Campaign will decorate Waverly Place in blue lights, and tons of toys will host Puzzle Piece Campaign throughout the month of April. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim August, April 2014 as National Autism Awareness Month, and urge all residents to become better educated on the subject of autism spectrum disorders. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I'd just like to say thank you. My son has autism, he just turned nine on Saturday, and I thank Autism Speaks for providing me a network of support, of friends, and families who go through the same thing that we go through. And I thank the town of Madison, the community of Madison, has really supported us as a community, they've come together to help us raise money and raise awareness. I thank the Board of Education and the schools, who are supporting my son, and supporting us, and who continue to try to help. So thank you, everyone.
We're going to play a little video to set up our next proclamation here. This is 1989 Memorial Day Parade, and the significance of the year is it was the 100th anniversary of Madison. I did tell Jim, keep it short and sweet, so.
Mayor, I want to say for the record, later on on that tape, there was an excellent and younger person filled with vim and vigor named Sam Cerciello telling jokes. He had a great head of hair, and anybody who wants to see that later on, it's excellent, Sam.
I'd kill for Sam's hair.
So in 1889, Madison was founded, we, the village of Madison had been around since 1834, as we just renamed our village from Bottle Hill to Madison, but it was 125 years ago that we decided enough of working with Chatham Township, we want to control our, we want to control our own water system, and quickly after that, our own electric utility. And thus, the leaders of the Village of Madison at that time broke away from Chatham. And we've, as I said before, we've made up, and now we're sharing services with the Chatham, so we're getting along fine. But I want to have some of the members of the DDC, please, come up. Our chair, Russ Stern, Darlene Byrne, Lisa Ellis, Mark Fabianski. DDC has taken the lead in celebrating our 125th anniversary. So let me go through this, and we'll talk about some of the things that will be going on. Whereas Madison, a borough located in the Morris County in the state of New Jersey, was incorporated on December 27, 1889, when it seceded from Chatham Township and adopted the borough form of government. And whereas originally established in 1750 as a village called Bottle Hill, in 1834, the name was changed to Madison, to honor President James Madison. And whereas known as a rose city because of a successful rose-growing industry, which prospered for over a century, Madison was home to over 40 rose growers, who in turn constructed greenhouses and employed many workers in the industry. And whereas Madison has a long and rich history, and such it is appropriate to celebrate Madison's 125th anniversary. And whereas Madison enjoys a beautiful downtown, supported by the Madison Downtown Development Commission, which coordinates many annual events such as Bottle Hill Day, the Farmer's Market, and May Day, drawing thousands of people to town. And whereas the DDC has agreed to take the lead and coordinate various festivities to celebrate the 125th anniversary, including a gala event that is to be coupled with the DDC MACA banner auction. And whereas all nonprofits, businesses, organizations, schools, and groups are encouraged to work with the DDC to incorporate 125 into their events and activities for the entire year in order to commemorate and celebrate the momentous occasion. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby recognize the 125th anniversary of Madison, New Jersey, and encourage merchants, residents, to celebrate this special occasion throughout the year. So thank you for taking the lead. Any comments you'd like to?
Let the celebration begin.
There we go. Keep it simple.
So there will be many events going through the year. The artists for the downtown banner display have been, it was mentioned to them that this is our 125th anniversary, encouraging them to incorporate that into the paintings they do for downtown. You will see at Bottle Hill Day, May Day, and other times. And then on the, our public access channel, Channel 21 on Cablevision, and Channel 34 on FiOS, we'll be showing the full Memorial Day Parade, not just a 30-second snippet, so you can watch that whole 100th anniversary celebration. So please celebrate, it is a milestone, and we will be reaching out to the leaders in Chatham Township and maybe inviting them to reenact the succession.
Bob, I just wanted to add one thing. We will be producing some new flags.
So we can capture on? Well, we have to get this whole celebration rolling, so we're going to start with the production of new downtown flags, which will be specifically celebrating the 125th anniversary of Madison. And we hope also to sell those to the general public, as time permits. And we'll be seeing some nice logos over a variety of our events, and we look forward to all groups participating. Of course, the governing body, our local businesses, other volunteer organizations, schools, however you can promote the history of Madison, and show your spirit, show your Madison spirit. Thank you.
And just, I did forget to mention, or re-mention, where all this archival video will come from. People that have lived in Madison have known for generations, there is everything, there's one thing consistent at every major event, and that is a Toto, a Carmen Toto in particular, behind a camera. Years ago, it was Carmen Toto Sr. with the 8-millimeter camera, and now it's Carmen Jr. with the video camera recording all these events. It's very nice to put together this great little archive. Great, reports from committees. Health, Mr. Landrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. The report from the Health Department this month was going, this meeting was going to be about pneumonia. And being that I was just released from the hospital after an extended stay with viral pneumonia, they've decided to make me their poster child. So I have a little information on it that I'd be happy to share with everybody, and take it to heart, because I experienced it. Historically, the pneumovax vaccine was given to individuals 65 years or older. However, they're finding that it is beneficial for those much younger. And here's the criteria. Anyone 2 through 64 years of age who has a long-term health problem such as heart disease or lung disease. Anyone 2 through 64 years of old who has a disease or condition that lowers the body's resistance to infection, or in that same age bracket who's taking a drug or treatment that lowers the body's resistance to infection. And any residents of nursing homes or long-term care facilities. What they're encouraging individuals to do, since, you know, after I mentioned it to a few people, I've had it, so they said, oh, I know somebody who's had it as well. And viral pneumonia is contagious. They would just recommend you go to your doctor, ask about the vaccine, whether you should get it or not, and it's worthwhile getting. You know, an ounce of prevention towards the pound of cure, and I will vouch for it. If I had had it, it would have been well worth it. In regards to the Master Plan Committee, or the 39 Acres Committee, that I frequently call it, within the next two council meetings, you're going to be getting a report from the different subcommittees that have been working on a number of projects there. And they include the creation of a snow hill, which will, when it snows, get children off the public golf courses and the hilly streets of town, making it safer for everybody. We've already heard some reports for the deer fencing and the restoration of the wetlands. We'll get some final numbers and information on that. They're talking about a playground up there, similar to what's at Dodge Field. So if one child is playing there, you know, in a sporting event, if you have younger children, they have someplace to go. And then finally, a trails project, and Councilwoman Bailey, who's been working hard on that, will talk about that during her report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And with utilities, and if you have anything as backup to public works and engineering, Ms. Vitale?
Thank you, Mayor. From the Electric Department, the Electric Department has completed the new three-phase service at 21 Central Avenue. So that looks like it's really moving along. I looked at it today, and it's, some of the facade is up, and it's starting to look a little bit better. They also removed transformers and demolition of primary voltage riser poles in Green Village Road School. They installed a new pole transformer and cable for Barden Street Housing Development. Those are new houses on the corner of Barden and Central. And they've also completed pole transfers on Greenwood Avenue. From the engineer, as the mayor mentioned, there was a bid opening for the 2014 Road Improvement Program that was completed on March 13. The bidder submitted costs to complete Academy, Belmont, Part of North, Pine Tree, Durwood, Fletcher, Part of Niles, Vinton, and Wilson, in a total of nine street segments. A contract award for the apparent low bidder is scheduled for this evening, and you'll hear about that. They're also working on projects for Mill and Overlay, which are absolutely needed. And those projects are scheduled for the summer as a separate authorization, and that's going to include Division Avenue. And that cost is shared with Chatham, because one side of that road actually belongs to Chatham, and the other side to Madison. And also Woodland Avenue near Union Hill will be done. They're always, Bob Vogel is always asking for reimbursement requests at, you know, the federal and state-funded projects. And I think we did get a memo this week saying that there will be money available for those kinds of plans. They're also working on construction plans and specifications for the East Street parking lot improvements. That's being done by in-staff, and the bid schedule anticipates a public bid opening on around May 15th for the project. That is near, the Little League fields, and that really, that parking lot is really is in dire need of help. They're also working on Waverly Green parking lot, that they're considering working on a site plan. However, the field survey shows that there's a lot to resolve with utility conflicts and draining issues, and then, thus requiring some additional time. As far as sewer is concerned, the sewer main lining bid documents are being produced in-house, and anticipate a bid opening in May of this year. That's something that we did a long time ago, is very important, so now we're getting back into that lining of the sewer, of the different sewers. Candlewood Pump Station, the level controls at the pump station has been replaced with a more modern equipment. The staff has ordered new motor start controls with a dry pit, submersible motor, to replace vertical straf motors and pumps. And that's all engineer talk, okay? So anybody who gets that? I try and understand them as much as I can. Treadwell Pump Station, they've ordered a generator and upgraded the gas main for that location. So they're also doing improvements regarding the concrete and the manholes, to make sure that there's no problems, especially when we have severe weather. Let's see, one of the things you might notice is Verizon Wireless has agreed to relocate certain antennas near the top of the Madison tank, to avoid access restrictions by the water personnel. And our staff is assisting the carrier with the required modifications. So if you see somebody on top of that, that's exactly what they're, what they're doing. The Engineering Department really does a lot, they keep very close sight of what's happening at the library with its closure now, for as best as our Bailey Ellard Site Remediation work is continuing, as well as the Madison Recreation Site remediation. And then we've had some problems here at Hartley Dodge also, that required site remediation. So they're kept very busy. A lot of this is being done in-house, which is saving us a tremendous amount of money. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before we go to the next, I forgot one important announcement, that our next scheduled meeting was April 14th, which is the first night of Passover. We will move that meeting to Thursday, April 10th, at the executive session starting at 7:00, and the public session starting at 8:00, and that is the night of the hearing for the budget. So again, the 14th meeting moved up to Thursday, April 10th. And now on to Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The Complete Streets Committee met last week. We reviewed the streets that will be reconstructed with sidewalks and curbing. We also discussed briefly the congestion of cars that drop off and pick up at the schools. Spring is coming, so we're hoping that you will encourage your children to walk to school and relieve some of that congestion. As Mr. Landrigan said, we've been working on the passive part of the Madison Recreation Complex, and I'm pleased to announce that April 23rd, we are going to have the kickoff of volunteers from BASF, clear brush from the trails, do some trail blazing, trail edging. And most likely, the next date for volunteers will be May 15th, and we will continue to improve the trails there. With an, I think, a opening day will be on June 7th, which is also the National Trails Day here in New Jersey. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. It's hard to believe, but election season's almost upon us. We have primaries June 3rd, and we have filing deadlines, which are obviously much sooner. For, we have nomination petitions due for county committee member, as well as municipal office, that there are two council seats that will be in contention. The deadline for filing is March 31st at 4:00 p.m. If you have any questions, or you need forms, please see anyone in the clerk's office, they'll be able to help you. I also would like to add to what the mayor just said, and encourage you to come out to the meeting on April 10th. That's the time we will yet again introduce the budget, we'll have a hearing, and anticipate adopting the budget at that meeting. It is, we've opened as many avenues to comment from the public as possible, and it's been extremely productive. I would again encourage you to come, this is in effect the last time for this year's budget. I also want to reiterate that there were two programs out there that I've talked about before, and again, I encourage you to take advantage of them if they apply to you. One is the Senior Citizen Tax Free program, and the other one is the New Jersey Energy Audit Program. Both excellent, easy ways to save money, and in the case of the latter, to save energy while you're doing it. So it's an excellent program. Then I have one other comment, really aside from the areas that I'm talking about, and that happens to do with strategic planning. We have formed the committees, there are four, they are underway, they're, people are working quite hard and getting a lot done early on. We had what I guess you'd have to call a high-class problem. We had many more people volunteer to serve on these committees than was at all possible to accommodate. And so what I had to do was ask each of the chairs to pick from the list of people who volunteered, and/or people they had in mind, and invite them. And I would have liked to have sent a note to everyone who volunteered and wasn't called. One, it would be premature, because in a number of cases, committees will be changing as the year goes on, because they will change their focus. So there are people who have not yet been called, who may well be called sometime in the near future. And the other part is that there were just too many people. So my apologies for not getting back to you each and all personally, but thank you again for volunteering. What they say about Madison is, when you ask for volunteers, you get them. It is true, I can testify to that. So thank you again.
Thank you. And community affairs, Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only update tonight is on Downtown Development Commission, a bunch of updates. The first is the Taste of Madison is set for April 7th. This event will be held at the Park Avenue Club, supports the Chamber, DDC, and Rotary Club. The organizers are proud to announce that this year's taste will once again feature the Napa Valley Ventners. For tickets or more information, please visit WW. For tickets or more information, please visit www.tastemadison.org. The DDC is also working on a pilot wayfinding signage project. Planners, architects, and others have been involved in this process. The plan is to start with a pilot program that will include eight signs directing visitors from Floraum Park, the MRC, Madison High School, and the Ridgedale Avenue Corridor to the downtown area this spring and summer. The DDC is hoping to give a presentation to council and obtain approval for the pilot program in April. Future phases could include directing people to the Town Hall, the University District, and various arts destinations. A fully implemented wayfinding program is a significant financial commitment, and the DDC's volunteers will be looking for additional funding sources if the program is to be expanded. Plans are also in the works for May Day. The annual cleanup event is scheduled for Saturday, May 3rd. Those interested in donating or volunteering should contact Mara Johnson at 973-822-3900. And the DDC inquest are held a bowling fundraiser for the YMCA on March 19th at the Plaza Lanes. The next fundraiser is set for April 17th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. For $15, participants can bowl for two hours, dine on free pizza and soft drinks, and support a great cause. Anyone interested in attending should contact Laura Cole of the DDC. Finally, the Chamber of Commerce is gearing up for its spring sidewalk sale and merchant open house on April 26th. This is the same day as the Little League Parade, and the Chamber is hoping to increase downtown shopping on that day. Resolution 103-2014, which is on tonight's agenda, is in support of this program. Thank you very much.
Communications and petitions.
Yes, Mayor, council received an email on March 18th from Sheriff Monkle of Lewanaca Way regarding yard waste pickup.
Now we're on to invitation for discussion, the first of two. This is the one that's limited to items on the agenda discussions and also resolutions. So when you step up, please state your name, your address, and the resolution you're speaking on by number, and then the resolution, or if you're commenting on the agenda discussion, which is 39 Green Village Road Redevelopment Plan. So under those guidelines, does anyone wish to be heard? And again, it's a three-minute, keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Sam Cerciolo, Park Avenue, Madison. Just for some information on the resolution with the construction, Resolution 97, Savelli and Sons. He's a very good contractor. Just for curiosity, how many contractors bid it on this job?
There are a lot.
Eight.
Eight?
Eight.
You had eight contractors? That was just good. What I want to talk about, you know, you're spending this money, which is good, but before the winter, this past winter, which was a nasty winter, I suggested about the front of the granite out here, it was bad, the quarking was coming out. I mean, if, when you come up here, please look at that. If you gotta do it by next winter, it's starting to bleed, and it's gonna make a mess in this front entranceway. That's all beautiful granite there, and I don't know if you left some money there, because it's gonna cost you a few dollars to get that done by a real good contractor.
Yeah, I think that certainly, we've got that on the radar as I was walking in the other day, Sam, I did notice the same thing, and we know open cracks just lead to water seepage and then more problems. Anyone else wishing to be heard on items on the consent agenda or discussion? Seeing none, close this part of the meeting, and we move on to agenda discussion, 39 Green Village Road Redevelopment Plan.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're being, we're introducing an ordinance for first reading to adopt the redevelopment plan for 39 Green Village Road. The original building at 39 Green Village Road was being renovated, had been approved by the zoning board of adjustment when a fire burned it to the ground. So in December, the council approved a residential, a resolution identifying this lot as an area in need of rehabilitation. Now, the next step was for the planning board to draw up a redevelopment plan for council approval, and there were several of us on the planning board who worked with our planner, and we put together the plan and the redevelopment, and then we need to do an ordinance at this point, saying that we adopt the plan. So it'll, that's, tonight we do the ordinance, goes back to the planning board if we've made any suggestions or changes, then it comes back again to the council for a final reading in April. So you have the plan before you, if you have any questions, this pretty much mirrors what the zoning board approved, and it, really, if you saw the picture of what they're proposing, I mean, what's being proposed, it's very similar to, we worked with the developer, and it's very similar to what was there. It's gonna be a beautiful building, and it's going to satisfy a housing need here in Madison. Questions?
Questions on it? It's a well-thought-out plan, and not only do we have close to what was the original building, but it will be a 21st century building with parking that can support the site.
Right, the parking, most, three-quarters of the parking will be underneath the building, which is really great. So it's, it's really a good plan, anyway. Thank you.
That, Ordinance Six is listed for introduction. And now we're on to ordinances for hearing. Can you please read the statement?
Yes, ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, March 10th, 2014. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to members of the general public.
I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance Four, 2014, calendar year 2014, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
I open the hearing for Ordinance Four dash 2014. Anyone in the public wishing to be heard on this ordinance, please step to the microphone, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance Four dash 2014.
I second that ordinance.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. I declare Ordinance Four dash 2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance Five, 2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $16,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for replacement of the Department of Public Works spoiler.
I open the hearing for Ordinance Five dash 2014. Anybody in the public wishing to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance Five dash 2014.
I second that.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. I declare Ordinance Five dash 2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to invitation for discussion number two, when you may come up and comment on anything, not just limited to the agenda items. Please step to lectern, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard? Welcome back, Sam.
Sam Cerciolo, Madison Park Avenue. We had a nasty winter, and Public Works in Madison did a tremendous job on the roads. I mean, ask anybody in different towns, it's a great job. But, you know, I'm around town all the time, and every Sunday I walk from my house, which is on Park Avenue, all the way down to Main Street South, then I go to church. But, matter of fact, the example, Floraum Park, it was in the paper last week, they gave out 47 summons to people that didn't shovel their walk 48 hours after the snow. It took in about $6,000. They charged $130 a fine. Just from where I talk, there's, I can name seven residents or owners of a building that didn't shovel their walk right on Park Avenue, and it was very dangerous, because people coming down Park Avenue had to walk out the driveway, go by the house that didn't shovel their snow, and walk back on the sidewalk. So I suggest, you know, maybe next, before the winter of next year, you know, maybe an electric bill, tell people they got it 48 hours. Did we find anybody? I don't think we find anybody this year. I mean, but it was very dangerous, and riding around, I seen a lot of people didn't shovel their walks 48 hours. And it's very dangerous. So I suggest we tighten up on that. I don't think, I don't think one person, again, like I said, Floraum Park did $6,000 in fines. People hollered, but, you know.
I think that's a good point. We'll, Jimmy's making note of that, that we'll remind people next, prior to next winter. Also, while there's, I don't think there's still a formal program, but I think anyone that knows a senior or someone who is disabled, cannot take care of their sidewalk, that if you, if you are able, to go ahead and volunteer to help out, because that will not only help that person, but help those that are trying to use the sidewalks to get from point A to point B. Any other, anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Move on to introduction of ordinances.
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for April 10th, 2014. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up Ordinance Six, 2014, for first reading, and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance Six, 2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison adopting a redevelopment plan in accordance with NJSA 48:12A-7 for 39 Green Village Road.
Mayor, I move Ordinance Six dash 2014.
I second that ordinance.
Any further discussion beyond our agenda item? Seeing none, roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolution R97 dash 2014 through R107 dash 2014, and R109 dash 2014 through R110 through 2014.
Second.
Discussion or any that need to be pulled? Then roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. No unfinished business? May I have the voucher registered?
Public Safety, $28,272.96. Health and Public Assistance, $1,387.18. Public Works and Engineering, $268,859.14. Community Affairs, $22,832.39. Finance and Borough Clerk, $3,057,961.38. Utilities, $1,502,787.90. The total is $4,882,195.95.
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers.
A second.
Discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. There is no new business?
One question, Mr. Mayor, did we formally change the meeting, or do we need to vote on that tonight, the date for April?
Um, I don't know if you have to...
I think it's probably, it's probably not a bad idea, we could do a roll call vote, moving it to April. The mayor did announce it to April 10th at 7:00 PM, but we could, we could do it under new business, a resolution to formally cancel the April 14th meeting and move the meeting to April 10th at 7:00 PM for executive, 8:00 PM for general public, to accommodate the first night of Passover.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Thank you for making that official, appreciate it. Now we can...
And with that, I move that we adjourn for the evening. Thank you.
Here we go, we made it.
Amazing, under nine.
Have any changes ready?
One taper.
A one taper.
Yay!
One taper. Okay. Don't look what I care about, it's on Saturday and Sunday morning.